All right, it's four o'clock. Are we good on the thing?
Yeah, we're ready.
All right, four o'clock. I will call this meeting to order. And Janet, would you like to call?
Councilmember Trupiano, here. Mayor Juan.
I am here. All right. First is public comment on non-agenda items. If there's anyone that would like to make a comment on non-agenda items, this is your time. I will go.
Oh, I guess it's agenda.
Okay. Anyone online that would like to make comments on non-agenda items?
Mayor Juan, I do not have any hands raised on this item.
Excellent. Then I will close that public comment and we will move to action items. And the first order of business is the presentation of the audited financial statements. Nataish, are you prepared to introduce the item or would, do you need a moment?
The city manager will introduce that item. Good afternoon, mayor and council member. We're pleased to bring you the draft audit for fiscal year 22 this afternoon as a prelude to bringing it to the full city council for their information as well. We do have Nataish Sharma, our interim finance director with us today, as well as Bryce Rojas, who is our auditor. Bryce will make a presentation. It was in your packet as well, so he will go through that presentation and then we'll all be available for questions as well. So with that, Bryce, I will turn it over to you. You can hit the button with the little dot on it to turn your microphone on. Very good job.
Thank you. Thank you for having me today. And we have the, sorry, you going?
No, it'll, it'll come up.
Right there.
Remember I told you?
All right, thank you. Well, while that's getting going, I'm the partner on the audit this year. And we've performed an audit and we're, of the city's financial statements. We'll go to the next slide. Let's go one more slide. In this year, we were able to issue a clean opinion or an unmodified opinion. That means after all the auditing procedures, all the work that was done by staff, we were able to say that the financials were fairly, fairly stated in all material respects, not misstated. They were fairly stated. And so that's, that's the outcome you're hoping for and that's what we were able to do, due to the work of the staff. And just a quick overview, the city's equity or net position as a whole was about 45.76 million dollars. And the unrestricted net position, unrestricted portion of that equity was actually 5.87. The slide says 5.74, but I updated it or corrected it to 5.87. And then the city's general fund, which is, handles a lot of the operations of the city, the revenues for the year were 4.898 million, while the expenditures were 6.24 million during the year, resulting in a deficiency of revenues under expenditures of 1.3 million. But the city during the year received a large grant and that was transferred into the general fund. And so after the grant was transferred in, the city's change in fund balance increased $250,000. And the city as a whole ultimately increased its net position by $338,000. To the next slide, please. And as a part of the audit, we look at the numbers mostly, but we do look at what's going on with the internal controls over financial reporting. And during our auditing procedures, we noticed a few areas that could be improved and a few of them were called material weaknesses. And the large one that we're looking at is really the continuity of personnel in the finance department. We had someone come in, close last year's books and then leave before the fiscal year 22 books were closed. So with that, institutional knowledge was lost. The city brought in two very capable and qualified people to close the books and they did a good job, but even then they, they needed some, sometimes some guidance on where to look for items and what to do. So we're, that was a material weakness we identified. And then also fair value estimates. Fair value is tricky because one person values an item at one, one value, another person looks at it and says it's a different value. So the city looked at one of their assets and valued it at one, one number. And then as auditors, we looked at it, we took a couple other item, sources and valued it, found a valuation that was different. And so as a result of that, a journal entry was booked to bring up the, the fair value estimate on this asset. And then the other area was just the agency funds of the city. They can be complex. These are the funds that the city manages, but they don't have rights to the money there. They're just acting as an agent. Like I said, they can be complex. And so the staff came in and didn't know exactly what the flow-throughs with these agencies were. And so we noted some, some journal entries there. And in one of the funds, there was actually a negative cash balance at year end. And then another area that we saw that there's opportunity to strengthen internal controls was just with document retention. In the past, I've seen the practice in the city was to record a journal entry and attach support to that journal entry. But this year, that wasn't always, that wasn't happening on a consistent basis. So we're just bringing that to the attention of the city so they can improve the, the procedures there. Go to the next slide, please.
Should we hold questions or do you want to go through your thing?
It's up to you. I'm here for you.
Can you just repeat that last statement?
What's your preference?
Sounds like there's questions right there, so we can address those now. That's fine.
Okay, cool. On the fair value, I just had questions around, because material weaknesses are pretty serious, right?
Yes. If they're not taken care of, it's possible a material misstatement could happen.
I mean, it's essentially, I mean, the definition is that you could have a material misstatement without knowing it.
Exactly.
Right? So I mean, that could already be the case if it's a material weakness?
Yes.
Okay. On the fair value, the continuity of personnel, I think, is pretty straightforward. On the fair value estimate, what was the magnitude of the delta between the fair value that you had established and what the city was carrying at the time? And what were the assets?
So it was the strand of hand, then equity investment and strand of hand.
There's five homes, right?
There's five homes. Sorry, I, I move on and it just leaves my brain. So I'm guessing it's like 150,000.
It's not a test. It's hard to remember off the top of your head.
It was, it was about 150 some thousand dollars. And the, it's even the date of the valuation, like I could run a, you know, a report from realtor.com or Zillow. And even those two, even, you know, will have different values. And since the, it's the, is the estimate, and one of the things we don't do is that we don't actually hire somebody to go and get appraisal. So we just use the best estimate. And depending on the time, like you run it, so that values can change. As you know, that the market has been declining a little bit and so those have impacted. So even 150,000 dollars on almost a million dollars in property or 800,000 dollars, it's, it wasn't substantial, you know, when you combine that. But it was mostly due to the timing of the, the report when it's, when it's ran.
So it was the change that you had proposed and was accepted? I have no idea. The change that you had proposed and was accepted was a decrease in fair value?
Yes, it was. The market had been decreasing.
Okay.
Actually, maybe it was increased.
It was increased a little bit.
It was increased, sorry.
But at the end of the day, when those, when, when those come to maturity, do, it's not like we realize the value of those at all, right? I mean, it's essentially, not forgiven is the wrong word, I think, but.
There is a forgiveness on the loans with these residents, but yeah, the asset just comes off the books. And so we're talking, it's just an adjustment in fair value.
Okay. So I mean, we're never expected, I mean, if all goes well.
Never expect to get paid.
We are not expected to collect on these at all, right?
Yeah.
And when we're talking materiality, 150,000 over our fund, I mean, how did that meet our threshold?
Again, so it was on a fund basis that, so it wasn't government-wide. As a government-wide is probably a material.
Yeah.
But when we're looking just at that specific fund, which is basically strand of hand homes, it was material.
Okay. Okay, got it. Could you expand a little bit on the weakness surrounding agency funds? Like what was the nature of the weakness that was discovered? And what was the, what was the risk of that discovery then?
So what we, so throughout the whole process, there's questions on where do these funds go? When the money comes in, does it go to this fund or does it go to this fund? Because there's the Clayton Financing Authority, which is related to the community facilities district, but they're not the same. So there were questions there, which in itself is not a material weakness, but it, and then there was this negative cash in the community facility districts balance. And we're not exactly sure why that is. There's different opinions on why there's different. I think, well, we don't have to go into the reasons, but there's.
So the negative cash was the, was the big trigger on that one?
That's the problem.
Okay. And did we, was, did we determine if that was a misallocation or just like a miss, what do you call it? Designation?
It's, it's a timing issue. One of the things I just wanted to make it clear that we, we are actually looking at to resolve it, but it's really when you post it and where you post those entries. But these are monies that we collect to pay the debt, so, and which we did. So one of the things that we also want to note is that usually the last payment that, when it's made, the funds are usually set aside, sometimes with the trustee to make the payments. And we may be able to make payments, then we seek reimbursement from the trustee too. So that, we haven't actually, when this was brought up, the negative cash due to timing of the audit, we basically booked a short-term, you know, loan to make it whole and then we didn't book. We actually left it as is because it's an agency fund. And now we can just go back and reconcile that and bring that to you, saying that, hey, this is what happened in the audit and here's what we did and here's the results of it.
That was the middle school CFD.
Middle school CFD, yes.
So this was the last year, so 20, in September of 2022, so this current fiscal year.
It's our last payment of that obligation.
We finished that. And so there was some confusion last year about whether we needed to assess in the final year or not assess in the final year, whether there was, we had a correct number for what the balance was in there. And so it was all around that one issue of that final payment. And so I think that's where the confusion was going into the end of the prior fiscal year and coming into the beginning of this fiscal year. I do know that we assessed for the 2223 fiscal year and we paid off the CFD. So that CFD is now closed out and that loan is now closed out. So we're not going to have that problem again with that CFD, we know for sure, because it's paid off. I will say that there were some complex transactions associated with the successor, the RDA funds and the Clayton Financing Authority in general. And those Catherine had been working on when she was here. We've been still trying to make sure we fully understand those. That's the sort of broader issue on agency funds. The middle school CFD, we do know exactly what happened. We just, we know that we were paying off our final year on it this fiscal year.
Okay, cool. Thank you. My last question, on the document retention, this journal entry support, what were the number of exceptions that you determined over your sample?
I did not quantify that. I was looking for specific journal entries. And as I was going through the, the large book of journal entries, I did note that there weren't, wasn't always evidence attached to the, to the support. Sorry, I couldn't give you the right number.
Okay, that was all my questions on this, on this page. Did you have any?
No, it was just that, you probably don't remember what it was now. It was your last statement and I thought you said something about a portal? Was it something about a portal? I couldn't understand what you were saying, so.
I sometimes mumble and I apologize.
His, his last statement was about this document attachments to the journal entries. And so making sure that we capture all the relevant documentation for the journal entries is something that we need to make sure that we're doing. I know we had some catch-up journal entries when Catherine was here and it may be that some of that meant that we didn't get somehow, when she was relooking at journal entries that had been done by the interim, that may be where that issue came from. So we just need to make sure that we've got that attached. But that was what he, the last thing that he mentioned. Okay, thanks.
And do we, are those physical, do we keep all the, do we retain the support and documentation on, on a physical basis or do we attach it electronically somehow?
It's, it's physical. I do remember talk of going electronic, but it hasn't gone there yet.
Okay, that's fine. And then do we?
Well, we, we are scanning in invoices.
Sorry.
Are we doing journals?
I did hear that too and I forgot.
We are moving that direction. We are moving that direction. So we have started that effort.
And do our procedures include like a sign-off of the journal after approved?
There, in the system, there's one person who enters it in and another one who approves and accepts it. And Nataish can probably speak better to this.
Yeah, so there is a dual control. So things happen like where it's initiated by one person and either myself or our accountant, who's also a consultant, he reviews it. And then I do the overall review of the, the entries like payroll and, and everything else and accounts payable batches.
So you know my next question then?
Yeah.
So how did we have journals that were reviewed and signed off on without the support associated with it?
And, and some of these journal entries, and if you go into specific, are like things that we are aware of, things that come in a bank account and we see that, okay, money coming in from, you know, sales tax and other things and we'll sign off on it. But I think what Bryce is looking at is that when you look at the journal entry, all the documents should be attached together. And, and what we do is mostly keep electronic files and then we, we need to just kind of attach it to the journal entry itself. And there was a little bit of a transition that was happening between the finance director that was here and.
His watch thought you were talking to it.
Oh, okay. So, so between the finance director that was here and then once, you know, we, we kind of picked it up, there was a, there was a moment, there was a little bit of that gap where things were not happening. And we did catch up, but as, as we didn't go back to all the documents and make sure that everything had a backup, once Bryce asked for those, we were able to produce it for them, let's just say that.
They just had to go look a little bit more.
We just had to go look where we saved it and we attached it. So we did find the backup. It's just we did not attach it to the book, book, the binder that he was looking at, the hard copy. And we are going to transition into more electronic and a couple of reasons for that is saving paper, but also space. And, and, and so we are more moving into that direction.
I mean, that's all right. So that was, that's, that's good context. So I wasn't, I wasn't clear if the documentation was missing or it was just not attached, but it existed somewhere else. If it existed somewhere else and it just wasn't there, but it, we had it electronically, that's a much different, it's a much different scenario.
Yeah, that was not a material weakness. And I was just noting in prior years, we'd seen that it had always been attached and then they just had to go look for it.
Sounds good. Thank you.
Additional questions? We can go into the numbers, the fun part. All right. Thank you. So as was mentioned, the equity or the total net position of the city was 45.7 million. And of that, 30 million of it was tied up in fixed assets, so it's not spendable. It's the fixed asset portion of the city. And then 9.89 million was restricted for special projects and programs. And then the unrestricted portion was about 5.87, not 5.74. 5.87 million. And that's an increase of 338,000 from the prior year. And then the general fund had an equity of about 6.4 million. And the non-spendable portion of that was 173,000. The committed portion of that was 495,000, leaving an unassigned balance of 5.7 million. And the change in general fund balance from one year, the, from prior year to this year was 250,000, 49,000. Next, please. And here's a summary, a year-to-year change in the government, government-wide revenues. And for the most part, they're relatively the same. The Indemperre Hall revenues did increase $18,000, which was significant for Indemperre Hall. And the operating grants and contributions increased by 1.8 million. And again, that was due to the American Rescue Plan Act funds that were received, the grant funds. Overall, the total revenues increased one and a half million to 9.3 million. Next, please. And here's just a pie chart of the breakdown of the government, government-wide revenues and where they come from, the sources. One more, please. And then on the other side is the government-wide expenses. Overall, expenses increased $300,000. But the big increases were to government, general government, while public safety and public works each decreased 243,000, $400,000 respectively. And Parks and Recreation increased $137,000. Next, please. And then here's the pie chart for expenses of the city and the sources, or the programs that they went to. Next one. Looking at general fund, just the general fund portion of the city, overall, the revenues increased one and a half million. The large portion of that was due to the, the transfer in from the American Rescue Plan Act fund that the city set up. I did not add that. This is in addition, sorry. It's not on the.
Okay, well, we need to explain that to everybody.
Yes, sorry.
We're all looking at the old numbers.
Thank you. Thank you for bringing that up. I updated this general fund revenues and just the revenue portion increased year-to-year about 90,000. And the increases were to property tax, a significant increase was property, property tax, 123,000. Adding on to that, the general fund received 1.47 million from the American Rescue Plan Act grant, which added to the increase of the general fund from one year to the next. The next.
So can I just interject for a minute? Why would our Publix work funding go down?
That was the government-wide expenses. Year-to-date change? Yep.
So that went down about $400,000. It's not that it wasn't funded during the year, just there was less purchase during the year. I don't have a more than that, sorry.
In, in part, and remind me, the landscape maintenance district fund is included in government-wide or is it special? Okay. So that is a function of monies being budgeted and a lot of it is not spent in the landscape maintenance district and then held over to be spent this year. So, you know, we have, the last couple of years had less spending in the landscape maintenance district because we haven't gotten projects done largely. And so that has had an impact on what we spent in the landscape maintenance district. The other thing that I would say, just in general, from Public Works, is that there are multiple funding sources, including the general fund, the landscape maintenance district fund and other funds that are special funds. And so if we had more work in storm drainage or gas tax or some of those, I don't think they fall in the government-wide.
They do.
Still in government-wide? Never mind.
The whole city.
Landscape Maintenance District.
And then the part B of my question is, why do we think Parks and Rec was up so 23%. Any sense of?
I'd have to look at it. I wouldn't, I, I don't want to speculate. I know that we had some, I don't want to speculate because I can't remember timing as to whether it was last fiscal year or this fiscal year, so I don't want to misspeak to that. But we'll have that answer for you.
Okay, thank you.
Is there a view? You go there.
The expenses are, they fluctuate. So I did see that Public Works, we invested a lot more than last year than this year. I was looking at the 21. And then Parks and Recreation was 592 in the year. And this year, we had about 729. Part of it could be the, the grants and other things that we, we get. So we, we can do a detailed analysis to see what increased that from 529 to 700,000. The increase in expenses that was.
Thank you.
And it could be capital improvements in parks too that can cause that to go up as well too. So it's government-wide way captures everything.
Is there, is there an easy way to have a view that segregates ARPA spending in, in these looks? Because it's really distortion, it's very distortionary.
It, it is. And one of the challenges is because of the way the city has chosen to handle its ARPA revenues, the answer is there's no automatic way from the auditor's standpoint to see that or to pull those apart. Because we have created those, the, the pandemic recovery reserve, for example, which is where our ARPA money is now sitting and where we spent most of our ARPA money out of in FY22. For all intents and purposes, that is general fund. It's fungible from an audit standpoint. I know. It is indistinguishable from an audit perspective from general fund. And so from Bryce's standpoint, it doesn't matter. It's general fund. You may remember, or not, from the budget document, I kept reiterating, this is what the number is and here's what it looks like without the ARPA funding because it does distort it completely. And so, you know, we can create those changes or that comparison, but there's nothing automatic from an accounting standpoint that treats those ARPA dollars as anything other than general fund dollars. And so, yes, we, we have gone round and round on that. In fact, I was talking to Ron about it earlier. It's like you just get these funny comparisons because it makes us look like, you know, our base general fund budget, for example, is about five and a half mil, a little under five and a half million. And you look at this year's budget, it's almost 6.9. Okay, well, that's not real.
It's not, yeah, it's not comparable. But I guess, you know, for the purposes of this discussion, the ACFA, is that the right? Am I using the right? I think some of these tables go directly into the ACFA, right? In the MDNA in front, or some of the charts?
Very similar, yes.
Some of them, right? Or some, some form of it? But the MDNAs, that section is not, you're not auditing that. I mean, we would be able to segregate the portions so that, so that the charts would be more comparable.
You are correct. That is the right spot to bring that out and highlight it.
Yeah, not in, not in the, in the chart, not in the, not in the fund financials, but in the MDNA section, I think that would be an appropriate place for that. Because, you know, the obvious one is, is public safety and we're, that's the page we're on now. Public safety, we typically spend right around 48 to 52%. And here we're reflecting 29%.
Right.
It's not, it's not a useful number. And so if, if it's possible, I know it's a little late in the game, but if it's, I mean, there's only like 100 transactions at ARPA, right?
Well, and Rena, weren't you going to have sort of a line item spreadsheet soon of all the ARPA funds? It was like that 800,000.
Yes, but I'm, I'm curious, mayor, as to where you were going with that. Because, you know, a chart like this, we can update to have essentially the ACFA number and then the, oh, so many acronyms, ARPA number. And, you know, show them combined and show them separated and that's fine. And in the MDMA as well. So I don't know that it matters how many transactions there are. We know where they are because they're into different funds.
Yeah.
So it's not hard for us to find that. It's just that it doesn't get reflected automatically from an auditing standpoint. And so, you know, for the council, we can add to it.
Yeah, let me, let me, let me clarify. If it's an easy change, then I think that's worthwhile. But if it's not an easy change, it's probably not worthwhile.
It's not a super hard change, but what, but it's not a change that is the, that, I guess I was slightly concerned by your question about the number of transactions because it doesn't matter. It's the summary of those transactions that we're reflecting in a second chart or a second description. And that's fine. What I don't, what I, what I don't think we want to do is get into any re-characterization to put it back into an actual grant fund.
Oh, no.
Okay. I just got concerned when you asked about the number of transactions. I was like, no, I'm not redoing transactions.
I was thinking like, I can build this table and live out like a minute. And if I know the transactions, then I can just change it. But I don't know how you have it loaded, so that's why I was thinking.
It's by, it's by fund. I mean, literally, it won't mean much to anybody else, but we can run Fund 111 separate from Fund 101 when we write a management component.
Okay.
And that's pretty straightforward.
Okay, cool. Like it, I would, I would trust your judgment. If it's easy to present in the MDNA, like separately, then I think it would be more informative. But if it's going to take more than like a couple, like a couple hours, then I probably wouldn't do it. So.
It just says we can do it.
All right.
We'll add that as a change in the, in the MDNA prior to presenting to the council.
None of the tables.
No. Yeah, got it.
Okay, thank you. Okay, thank you.
Good comment. Thank you. I'm making my notes right here, too. Okay. We were at general fund expenditures. Thank you, Janet. Those, let me catch up myself. As a result of the ARPA, as we're just discussing, large increase of the general government portion of the general fund. And overall, to the total expenditures of the general fund. Next slide, please. And then here's the visual representation of, in a pie chart form. And then one more slide. And some additional notes, pension under Gatsby sixty-eight, the net pension liability for the city was five point three million. The deferred outflows related to that were just under a million dollars. The deferred inflows were about three hundred and forty-four thousand. And similarly, the Gatsby seventy-five, the OPEB, the net OPEB liability was five hundred thirty-five thousand. The related outflows, there were no related outflows or inflows because the valuation, the measurement of OPEB occurred on the same date. Somebody, I need to update the slide. So, sorry. OPEB did not have deferred inflows or outflows because the measurement date was the same day as the year-end, fiscal year-end, June thirtieth, twenty twenty-two. And this year, new Gatsby was implemented, Gatsby eighty-seven leases, accounting for leases, capitalizing leases. There was a right-of-use assets. Two of them combined made up two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. That's basically classified as a capital asset on the financial statements. And then to offset it is a lease payable of two hundred and forty-four thousand. So over the life of the lease, we'll be paying about two hundred and forty-four thousand dollars.
What was the? What were the two assets that we, that qualified under the stream?
It was the radios. Police radios was the large portion of that, and then the Caltronics.
Caltronics copier.
Copier, correct.
This is the worst accounting standard ever. Okay, go.
There's another one coming, Gatsby ninety-six, so.
It was a lot of fun putting it on and doing.
Lease accounting is the worst. All right.
And so, next slide. That is all I have. If there are additional questions, I'm here for you.
Okay, one moment here. See, how did you want to do this? Did you have questions that you wanted to go through?
No, I'm gonna wait till you answer. I've got like three pages of notes, but you may ask something that
Okay.
Yeah, gets answered.
All right, so I have some random questions for you.
All right.
I have the document page, but it's not loaded now, so I have to recall it up, but I'll go to my questions. Second here. Sorry. When my computer shut down, all the windows that I had open have to be reloaded. All right. So on one of the pages, document page thirty-six, but page twenty-five of the report, investment income is negative? What's up with that?
Yeah, losses on investments, unrealized losses.
For the year?
Yeah.
Okay.
Remember, this is FY twenty-two, so we started to see that decline. And it is, one of the very first questions I sent back to Bryce is, tell me this is a paper loss and not an actual loss. And it's, it is, and as long as we hold those assets to maturity, we won't lose money on them.
Is that like a fair value adjusted loss? Is that what it is?
Fair value of the investments at life, the fair value of investments, CDs and bonds.
All right. So then on one of the fund financials, it lists American Rescue Plan Act. I don't have the page number because I forgot to write it down, but there's no activity listed.
Yes, so as I alluded to previously.
Oh, that's because that was the timing, right, I think?
Well, no, so the funds came in, so they were, the grant was received during the year and immediately transferred to the general fund. So that's all we see is the revenue and then transfer out to the general fund, and that's where all the expenditures are.
Okay, got it.
And at year-end, there was no cash in the, in that fund.
Okay. Are you aware of, maybe this is more of a question for staff, but you know, we, we made mention of the law surrounding sales tax and its change based on SCOTUS rule. Like, has, have we seen any impact of that yet, or when do we expect to?
So it's interesting. Sales tax revenues have been all over the map for the last maybe three years. Initially, a couple of years ago, we actually saw quite a big bump after the Wayfair decision, which allowed the county pools essentially to collect a significant amount of sales tax on online transactions that was not subject to sales tax before. And so the funds came in and we saw in our FY twenty numbers, I think, a pretty decent-sized gain in sales tax revenues. Subsequent to that, and, and because Clayton has a very small commercial base, we are very highly affected by what happens in the county pool. So things that are essentially countywide in nature and not situs to a particular jurisdiction go into these county pools, and then the county pool amounts are split out basically on a size basis. So we get this tiny portion, but it's significant for us. So we got the benefit of the Wayfair decision, and I remember early on when I was here, you mentioned it, and we did. We saw this nice uptick as a result of that. Subsequent to that, Amazon changed its business model. And as a result of that, they no longer treat their distribution centers as sort of corporate. They treat them as local. And as a result of that, all of the sales tax collected on Amazon items go to the jurisdictions that have the distribution centers. And so all that money that immediately flowed into the county pool flowed out of the county pool and into a few jurisdictions that have big Amazon distribution centers, of which we are not one. And so our sales tax revenue went up and then down. And so now we're sort of trying to see where it's going to land out. But those have been the biggest impacts to our sales tax revenues over the last two years. And we would expect to continue to lag in, within the county on sales tax growth because we don't have much local sales tax growth and because our county pool revenues are now more constrained by not having the big Amazon distribution centers counted toward those county pools. Does that answer your question?
It does. That's unfortunate, but yes, thank you.
Oh, so unfortunate. Trust me, the little cities have been arguing at CalCities that this is a travesty and we need to get it changed. And we have not been successful despite a statewide sales tax working group. We're not winning.
Amazon has a good argument, though. Just saying. Okay, thank you. That's helpful. On, kind of later in the document, page one fifty-seven, it talks about unsecured, it lists the top ten property tax assessed value. I'm having the title off the top of my head, and I probably got it wrong.
Yes.
Comcast is number one.
Unsecured.
But it calls it unsecured, and there's no value. Do we know what that is?
There is a value on the following page. About twenty-two million.
What is it?
What is the value? It's all the underground, oh, it's, he said it, it's twenty, if you look over the, Councilmember Tupiano emailed me about this. I think there's things missing. A number of these tables don't make any sense when you look at them online because they're essentially a two-page table. So all the column headings are in the left, and by the time you get all the way over the right-hand side of the page, you don't, you can't figure it out.
That's why.
You forget. And so it's over there as twenty-two point nine six two million unsecured value, but it's in a different column than the secured value, which shows up next to its headings. So it calls your attention to it more easily.
Yes. So that's the underground, like, wires?
Yeah, it's all the underground infrastructure.
Okay. And so their value in ten years went up twenty million dollars?
Well, yeah, I mean, you remember that Comcast didn't have as much infrastructure and they've built out all their broadband infrastructure in that period of time, et cetera. So a lot more value than they had when they were just a cable company.
Okay, thank you. When we talk about Endeavor, we talk about it not meeting, it not earning enough to cover its cost. What portion of the cost is depreciation in terms of percentage? Is it, is it the majority, I believe? So the, the fact that Endeavor has a loss, I think it's just, it's a paper loss, it's not cash, right? I mean, it's just a function of the depreciation charge?
I think the bulk of it is, if my memory serves me, the bulk of it is depreciation. Particularly now that we're getting rental revenue back, which covers more of the operating costs. Bryce, you may have the numbers in front of you, but my memory is that the, the, oh, it's fifty-fifty?
Right around there, yes.
It's about fifty-fifty. Twenty thousand dollars is the depreciation, which is a non-cash transaction. And twenty-six thousand is, is the general administrative and four thousand personnel cost. But as you know, that the charges for services have increased from prior year. We did have sixteen thousand dollars in cost recovery, which one of the items later after the audit is the update of the book of fee items, so.
But so we are making that.
Making back, yeah.
Do we, do we ever look at it on like an EBITDA basis?
Earnings before.
Oh, earnings before income tax.
No, no, I'm just curious. I mean, it's enterprise funds, I'm not sure if we.
Yeah, I mean, this is, we can, there's a cash flow statement that's attached to it that takes out the, the non-cash types, the items out of that. So it shows like what is the cash position, and if you look at that, it looks about eighty-seven hundred twenty dollars. That is the, the operating loss of the Endeavor Hall.
Okay, cool. All right, thank you. The note receivable, let's see, question on this one. We have the, we have three notes, right? On the Stranahan note, we have a comment here that, I'm trying to find it. It says, this is page seventy-eight of the document. It says, five loans outstanding, interest accrued. Then a total accrued interest and principal is forgiven over the last ten years. And then it says the collectability of the accrued interest is doubtful. Is, if the interest collectability is doubtful, how come the principal collectability is not doubtful?
So the interest is being accrued over time.
Yeah.
And as long as the homeowners do their part, they're never going to have to pay that interest. And so there's an allowance put up against it.
Okay. But we, we do an allowance against the interest, but not the principal?
Yes.
They would move together, right? I mean, if you're, you're only going to forgive the interest if you forgive the principal, too.
Usually you'll write off interest and principal, you leave it as is. What I have, what I will say is that during the housing boom, they, I was in another agency, a number of housing units are bought through these kind of programs. The property owners decided to sell, actually. And then the, there was an equity share between the city and then the resident, and the city did get paid back on the principal balance. So what we have done is that even though for presentation purposes, just to ensure that the principal stays as is, we do evaluate and write it off, but we do track it to see how much interest has been incurred over time.
No, I understand the tracking. I'm just saying that if we're going to establish an allowance for interest, it would make, it would be consistent to also simultaneously establish an allowance for principal because they would not, they would not diverge in their treatment, right? You would do one, one, you would not treat them differently.
Yeah, you'll create a valuation account to
For both.
Discount some of that principal balance, and I will leave that to our auditors to see what, you know, on that one, yeah.
Maybe, maybe for next year?
Yeah.
Okay. And then I guess my last question for now is, on the management letter that talks about the material weaknesses and internal controls, it talks about below are the city's responses? But then it's blank.
That is a work in process, so.
Okay, so we do not yet have that?
Correct.
Okay. Do you, is there a flavor of the responses that we could give now?
Yeah, we discussed this, and one of the things, as you noted, the first item was the personnel. We did make an offer to one of the applicants, so we're working through that. And I will say that the, even though it, this is a comment, but day-to-day, operations-wise, everything's been checking off. The bank reconciliation has been, been done on a regular basis. So operations-wise, it's a lot of things are being done. When it comes to audit, audit is a lot of about presentation, making sure that you go back. So when you go back to where, from auditing perspective, as a former auditor myself, there's a lot of stuff that needs to done, be done. But when you look at operation-wise, there's no, I would say even right now, there's no issues that we've seen that, that will cause any concern. So our response to that would be that our staff is working to address some of those auditing. One of the things we are working on is looking at some timelines to see when we should be working with the, with the auditors on this, you know, on the audit itself. Our goal is to have the audit sometime in November, so, and before December thirty-first. And what are the checklists prior to the audit that we need to make sure that we do the accruals on time? We do some of the other things on time to be ready for the audit. So there's a lot of checks and balances. I think we came to this audit and we started putting some of the documents together towards the, towards the end and just ran out of time on those. And that's why the comment is a little bit fair from the, from the auditor, but at the same time, I will say that, you know, I did have a conversation with Bryce and, and he said that, you know, compared to the agency being such a short team here, it was able to put together, compared to other agencies, they're still struggling to put down it, and there's a big agencies as well, too, with a lot of resources.
Okay. And then, sorry, I misspoke. This is my last question. Did you, did you know, and did you do your, I'm assuming that you did your required questions of surrounding fraud or existence of fraud? Did, did anything come up that raised concern? I did not see anything mentioned within the letter.
No, nothing came up during this year's audit. I think during last year's audit might be something you might have been referring to.
Yes.
And which occurred during the current year.
Okay.
Is that what we're referring to? Yes.
And, and did you follow up on that instance and any remediation effort?
We didn't, we did not during this audit, yes.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
I just have a couple of questions. For the revised and updated master use fees, the Tish, your company is working on that, right, GovInvest? And do you think we'll have those by due?
Well, that's, yeah, hold on, that's, that's the next item.
That's, oh, that's next item, okay. My other question was on capital improvement projects. I don't know why I still cannot find an up-to-date on the website somewhere or in the packet of a list of all of our capital improvement projects with costs and timeline associated.
So I think I mentioned to you that the, the best list of current capital projects is within the city's budget document. And I think I sent you the link to where it is in the, maybe it's in my outgoing email. In the city's budget document, which is an online interactive system, there is a section called capital improvement projects. And if you click on that, it brings up a list of all the capital improvement projects that are essentially currently active. And it gives, each project has its own page with a description of the project, the funding sources, et cetera. So that's true for current capital projects. We don't have an easy way, except to go back to old budget documents, to see prior capital projects. But, you know, that's something we need to build forward on, but it is in the budget document where those capital projects are listed. And I, it is my goal to link those pages to the engineering page that lists capital projects as well. So it's easy to find from there as well, but if you go through the budget document, they're all there.
Okay, thank you. I think that's all of my questions.
I stole your thunder.
You stole my thunder.
Thank you, Bryce.
Thank you very much. Thanks for having me. I do want to just reiterate, the staff that is hired is always quality. It's just, at the end, during the closing of the books, sometimes things happen. But like Nitish was saying, the day-to-day seems to be doing, going really well. It's just those one-off items that's unique to Clayton that's been difficult for the city. But again, the staff's great, and so thanks for having me.
Thank you.
So before...
Wait, no.
Go ahead. Two things, I think. Before we finish this item, one is that we would like to offer an opportunity for public comments, now that the council has asked their questions. And secondly, what we will be asking for the committee to approve us bringing this forward to the council for receiving file for this year's audit. So just wanted to wrap those things up.
Okay. We're going to take public comment now. If you'd like to hang tight for a moment, if there's any follow-up. So I'd open the floor for a public comment. If anyone, Ms. Stanway, if you'd like to public comment. Would you like me to bring the mic to you? What's that? I can bring the mic to you if you'd like.
It's okay, I can get this.
This is a ploy.
Green. Right, essentially, what I've been listening to during these comments here is a very rich, richly, a richly, well, essentially, the dog ate my homework. Okay. Reliable financial statements are based on two GAAP elements: materiality, a written opinion used to minimize audit risk, thank you Bryce for highlighting that, a material misstatement, and detention risk. If materiality, oh, and two, de minimis rule, practicable and formal, a rule set in collaboration between city council and the city financial officer. If materiality and de minimis are not part of a governmental entity's formal regulations, financial statements will inevitably devolve to be based on decisions that hinge on political whimsy. Clever Clayton appears to have found its own pathway for sidestepping formal regulation process by boldly publishing ad hoc pronouncements to its website. No council, vote, or consideration required. For instance, according to Clayton's website, Clayton Maintenance Department only oversees maintenance and upkeep of the city's parks, open spaces, trails, buildings, streets, and landscaping. Specifically, thirty-five acres of landscaping, fourteen acres of parks, eighty thousand square feet of public building, a thousand street lights, over a thousand street signs, eighty-four miles of streets and markings, five hundred and seventy-five catch basins, five hundred and fifteen acres of open space with twenty-seven miles of trails, ten miles of V ditches, and one hundred miles of creeks. Note, the omission of pedestrian facilities from this published list. Yet sidewalk upkeep that protects the public from harm is the very definition of de minimis under ADA, City Ordinance, PCC, 20656, International Building Code 2000 and 2003, and CCR Title 8, 3232. How increasing Clayton's audit risk and overall risk of litigation stabilizes the financial health of our fair city must be something this committee explores in depth. Even Clayton's 2122 auditor, thank you Bryce, notes alarming material weaknesses in Clayton's financial organization. Clayton suffers from a dearth of internal controls. Material weaknesses, continuity of personnel, are the rats leaving the sinking ship? Fair value estimates, misstatements of structural materiality, and agency funds under or overstated materiality? He notes opportunities to strengthen internal audit, internal controls, and operating efficiency, document retention, and organization. Note, omission of written, systematized guidelines, maybe that's auditor forbearance, I don't know. Anyway, the cure, as I see it, is that the Community Financial Stability Committee must develop for adoption a rigorous accounting policy for Clayton. To do this, they must publish a written de minimis rule into city resolutions, and publish a written resolution that material, materiality is not fungible, i.e. misstatements or omission of material facts influencing the context of an audit. And then they must meticulously assign appropriate de minimis and materiality to all city obligations.
And how, are we, are we doing okay? Because we're about six minutes in.
This is it. I have finished berating you.
Thank you.
All right.
Thank you for your comments. And I made a suggestion earlier to Ms. Stanway that if in the future she would like to send them in advance, then we could, we perhaps, there may be things that we could address timely. But it's just a suggestion. Thank you. Janet, do we have anyone online that would like to make a comment?
Mayor Juan, I do not have any hands raised on this item.
Okay, I will close public comment and bring it back for discussion. If there's anything that we'd like to discuss among ourselves, now is the time we can do so. Otherwise, we would make the recommendation, sorry, I'm just looking, got to get the right language here. We can make the recommendation to advance, advance the item. I would just, if you could give, I would like to see the changes that we talked about with the charts, if that's possible, given the constraints that we already talked about. And then also the formal, I don't know, does the management letter get included in the document, in the agenda, or no? Because it's included here. So typically, those are restricted, but I don't know, public agencies publish their management letters, so.
Normally, in other cities, I haven't seen it's addressed to the city manager, and the city manager's responsibility to carry those out. It's included in this packet, but usually it's addressed, there's a separate report that's addressed to the city council if there is on internal controls. But this is more of us making sure that, you know, we follow some of those things, the recommended practices. Again, some of these things are given as, like, what our recommendations are based on the audit guidelines, but really based on agency staffing and other things. We have to do what's best for us and things, how we can address some of those. So either way, we can include it. It's nothing to be big about, I mean, to be honest with you.
I would recommend that if we are including the management letter in the document, then we should also include the city's response in the document.
Yeah, we definitely include city's response. We should have probably included that prior to this getting published, but we'll make sure that the first thing we do is include that. And so you see both sides.
Okay.
And then the only other request I had was, again, on the formatting, especially when there was like a 10-year history, and we had five years, and we had the descriptives on the left-hand column. And then you went to the next page, and you're like, oh, I've got to keep toggling back to the descriptions, they're not in. So if there's a way to...
Can you carry the row, the row descriptions? In the past, the ACFers are always two pages. And if you were really fancy, you would get a fold-out.
Yeah. I think this was part of the midnight hour, that's probably why they had us.
Yeah, so, I mean, you could carry the formatting, the...
It was formatted for printing out rather than looking online.
Yes.
But we could easily just fix that for online.
Okay, I think that would be helpful for, because most readers will not look at it printed.
Thanks.
That was all, that was all I had. So I would say, I would recommend that we, or I would move that we approve the presentation of this and forward it to the full council for consideration and approval.
And I will second that.
All right. Janet, will you please call the vote?
Councilmember Chief Piana?
Aye.
Mayor Juan?
Aye.
Thank you.
And thank you, Bryce, for your work. Thank you to staff. I know that it is difficult to do an audit, especially given our staffing constraints. So you're to be commended for that, even in the circumstances. So thank you for that.
And, sorry, I just did have one other question about the timing. Is the audit due, need to be processed by a certain due date?
I think we missed it.
We missed it?
Isn't, isn't the ACFer typically due December 31st?
It, it depends on whether or not you want to apply to GFOA for an award, and you can ask for an extension, blah, blah, blah. We did not pursue that this year. We did get an extension last year, but the audit itself doesn't have the same kind of deadline that you're thinking of, which is that...
I used to get the award, so we would always have the December 31st deadline.
Yeah, it's, it's industry deadline.
Okay. One other recommendation, just outside of the scope of this. And this, some of the players here will not be here at the time, so that's fine. But it is, it is definitely a goal of mine to have the audit completed before the calendar year end. But beyond that, it is a goal to close the books final much more quickly than we do now. So I'm not sure what, when we did it. I think it was in October-ish.
Yeah, and we had a little bit of a schedule, yeah, October, and we're still going back and forth. But absolutely, I think point is noted.
End of July is the target.
August is, August and September is our, some of the revenues received, sales taxes received in September. So usually by September 30th is the closeout, and then usually you want to do in October, and then November, December, you get your audit completed. So we'll put it together as part of our process, is the audit timeline as well, too. And I think with the hiring of the personnel, and then with that little bit of support from some of us, we'll be able to accomplish that. Like I said, day-to-day is really working. It's just a matter of now, you know, making sure some of these other things that kind of came up, and how we can better be suited for that. New Gatsby's also, I mean, we went back and forth on New Gatsby's, but we're, we're ready for what's next here, I think.
Yeah, we can, we can do a working session on what's preventing us from hitting end of July.
It is a little bit different for us, just remember that.
All right. That'll make Cropper Shob a little easier, as well as maybe we can get in scheduling for the rest of your clients, so. All right, well, thank you very much. And we will move on to our next item, which is item 3B, Presentation on Proposal, or sorry, Presentation on Proposed Update to Master Fee Schedule. Nitish, take it away.
Good evening, Mayor, Councilmember Nitish Sharma, city's interim finance director. The item before you is basically an update on, from the work that GovInvest has been hired to do, is to update the city's master fee schedule. Your attachment includes, and attachment one includes, all the current fee schedules that are in place, that will be updated based on a methodology that I'll be talking about. But also, we'll be looking at any new fees or things that are, we're providing services to the, to the community, and how we can add that to the book of fees, and talk about processes, and then timeline as well, too. So the fee has, the city's fee program is about 5.9% of the general fund budget. And actually, it's probably a little bit more than that, because this is based on the 1.4 million dollars of upper revenues inflating the budget a little bit. So it's more like, I would say, about eight to nine percent, which is pretty substantial. Almost $400,000 of fees are recovered to basically pay for the programs and services that we are providing. It's important to note that when fees are not adequately adjusted or charged to the users, those burden fall onto the city's property taxpayers or general fund. So basically, your property taxes, your sales tax offset those costs. And most of these costs are actually fixed costs. These are the labor costs that, that takes to provide those services. So it's a really great opportunity for us to update the fee schedule and ensure that, you know, fees are, when you update on a regular basis, it also avoids the large increases that needs to happen to catch up. And some agencies, they don't increase fees for many, many years, and then they have a huge catch-up, which is really hard for property, you know, for citizens, in this case, or residents. And residents are not all property owners, but they live in the community, and or they take the services that is offered in the community. And also, it's important that the fees are looked at with the other surrounding agencies, to see what they are, are charging. You don't want to create a fee program that becomes more of what is called in, in recreation, is a pay-to-play program, because it becomes very expensive, and it, and it's also, may have some other consequences like equity issues or access issues. So how can you, you know, create a fee schedule that is full-cost recovery, at the same time, the policies are brought forward in front of the city council, or in front of the finance audit committee, to provide guidance at what level the fees should be set. So our goal here is to create a fee schedule to illustrate to you what is the cost of providing that services. Our job is not to say what the fees should be, but it's the council's, you know, direction, or the committee's direction, that the fees should be established at a, at a rate that the residents can afford, and it will not create other issues. So we will be updating the fees in compliance of the state of California law, which is Proposition 26. What it says is that you cannot be making profit on your fees, and you have to basically put together a fee schedule that you can validate, and say that these are the costs, and you can back that cost up. With the city's recent, I would say, innovation about having the interactive budget book, the fee documents will be directly tied to, from the, from the budget document, and you'll be able to create more transparency and accountability to ensure that how fees are calculated. Even at the level whereby the fees are calculated, at, for example, staff hourly charges, what is the hourly rate? All the employees' compensation is a public document. And so we'll take the compensation model, and then we'll be able to adjust that compensation model with the direct cost, that is considered direct cost. But with the indirect cost within the department, and then indirect costs associated with the overhead related to the support services department. For example, you know, finance has a role in the fee schedules, a little bit of administration cost. So we'll be able to calculate those costs, and be able to present that these are the different types of fees that the, the agency has, and this is the cost recovery rate. With that said, one of the things that is important when we are looking at the fee schedule is that we also look at the, the items that are non-cost fee recoveries. You know, there are going to be some items that, whereby you, you know, as governing body, may choose to have a certain amount of funding available from general fund, for example, economic development activities. Some agencies have those revenue, or budget allocated, to ensure that we have some cost for planners or other positions available to, to support that. So our goal will be to create the fee schedule, but then at the same time, address that fee schedule based on the council's or the committee's priorities and position. So the way that the fees will be worked, will be worked on is going to be a citywide project. This is a small agency, so we want to make sure that we don't miss any, any, any department or any service delivery areas. We're going to be working with, sort of, the first phase will be to scope the project out, working with the stakeholders internal, but also external stakeholders. That's one of the things... That's one of the things that's really important is to ensure we can work with our county partners, ensure we can work with some of our business partners and looking at the different types of services we provide and how there's, those fees can impact those services. So really working with a wide stakeholder group, trying to scope out what are the fees, what are the services that are being provided? How many hours are being spent? And case study that and put that into a sort of a model and then create a fee document. It's really important to identify the city's existing costs, but also looking at the city's practices and the business delivery model. One of the things that, when you look at the fee schedule, is you look at efficiencies. You look at the innovations. Are there innovations that may be available that will help with the adjusting the fee schedules in, actually in a manner that is more, more tolerable within the, within the business community or the citizens or residents group? So looking at those opportunities as well, like where efficiencies lie and that can help with the, with the final fee schedules. The, the fee schedules will be, will be presented in a way, in a document, or actually primarily in Excel document whereby the book will be available or the, the system will be available to the city to update the fees on a regular basis instead of hiring consultants to do that. As interim finance director, this will be a product for the city. So what I'm going to be working on that, transition that product to the city. And what I've say, would say is that in my prior agencies, the city was able to update the fees without paying so much money to consultants to do that. This is something that we can do if the, if the system is done right. If the right policies are adopted by the council committees, you can update those fees on a regular basis. For example, right policies would be adjusting the fees each year by the inflation, inflationary adjustment for the, for the San Francisco Bay Area cost of living adjustment. That would be a policy decision if council or committee chooses that we're going to, this is our fee schedule for 2223 going forward, we're going to keep up with our fees based on the cost of inflation. If inflation goes up, it's going to go up. If relation goes down, it's, you know, hopefully, you know, it does happen, it will adjust to that, but I don't think that will happen. One of the things that's really important to note in this fee schedule, why is this important to be done in the next few months and prior to the budget? Is because of the cost of living adjustment or cost of materials and supplies. The city's cost has really gone up in terms of materials and supplies we are purchasing to provide the services. You look at the inflation costs, it's about 9%. Materials and supplies costs is about 15% to 17% to 20% increase. And due to shortages, that also has caused some of those price increases, but really addressing the city's cost and making sure that we can present our cost and be able to say that this is what is really costing us to provide the service and then creating a fee. And then again, adopting of that defeat will be a, a policy decision. So the goal will be to work with the, with the committee and council on a different phased approach, like when we do the section of the fee, when we do the scoping and we will create some policy guidance for council. It's important to, for the committee to receive this policy guidance, because once you set the policies, the fees will be developed based on those policies that have been approved. You don't want to look at the policies after the fee, fee study has been done. You want to provide those guidance upfront. This is as a council, as a committee members. This is what you want to see the fees at, full cost recovery, making sure that general fund is in whole, making sure that, you know, some of these areas where it's, if it's economic development, it has some of the city contribution. So those policies will be presented to you. This is the very first step today, just to let you know that we are, we are engaged with the city to do this work and make it more transparent and accountable, so we can start working on this, on this, the next steps and then develop a policy framework for you to look at and provide direction. With that said, I will be happy to answer any questions you may have. And what I will say is that you're going to have a number of opportunities to have discussions with us. And that's part of our opportunity to be more transparent, accountable, but at the same time, develop a fee schedule that we all can live by. So I'll be working on that with our team here. And the goal will be to include this as part of the, the next budget, which will be in the, later in the spring that will be developing.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. I get excited about fees, so.
I'm a nerd.
Did you, did you have questions that you had?
Well, one of the questions that I had, can you expand a little bit more on the innovations that you were talking about? Are we talking about software innovations or? And the other part of my question is, do you look at similar-sized communities in our county to kind of see, are we undercharging or overcharging? Are we just about right?
Absolutely. And that is important for us as agency. Clayton being about 11,000, 12,000 residents here and some other agencies surrounding us, they have a little larger economic base, so they may be able to offset some of the fees with the, the economic base they have. For example, some agencies do additional sales tax measures, and those sales tax measures are used to offset some of the fees, like recreation fees and other fees, because that's part of the, the commitment they made to the community. What's important is to illustrate to, to the, to the, to everyone is that what does it cost us to provide that service? And then we look at what other agencies, what they are charging. And at that point, for us to determine, are they charging at the, at the full cost recovery level or are they charging at a discounted level? And we'll be able to present that data to you with some of the surrounding agencies. It's important to compare to your neighbors, because those neighbors, if somebody lives in Clayton, they may go to Concord for that service. So are we going to have a situation where our residents are going and paying a higher fee somewhere else, but they're getting a higher level of service? So it looks at service delivery and also looks at the fees. And then I think you had one.
Innovation.
Innovation, yes.
Innovation.
Innovation would be looking at what we'll see, it's like, for example, one of the agencies we looked at, they looked at, looking at permits submitted to planning and development online permitting system. And they wanted to do all the reviews online. And really, what they does is that cuts out on the, the, some of the materials and supplies cost, but that subscription expense for that software was very expensive. So we wanted to make sure that if you do this, at the same time, there's another cost associated with it. So what is the, what is the full cost recovery is like adjusting for both sides. So we'll look at some opportunities. There are, you know, like the budget book, for example, the interactive budget book that we have. What are the opportunities with that, we have with that? One of the things we have done is that we have a new ERP system as well. We're transitioning more into electronic-based system. Is that going to help us reduce cost that Bryce, he's not here anymore, but he was saying that we need to have all the general entries. It requires space and costs us a lot of money on toner and papers. Should, we have a system, should we looking at more electronic system?
Did you say we're moving to a new ERP system?
We already have one.
It's not a new ERP.
It's not a new.
The newest version.
Newest version, yes.
Of the existing ERP.
Okay, that's substantially different.
Yeah. I should have said, it's an, it's an upgrade of existing system.
Well, fillable PDF forms might even be a start. That's, yeah.
Yes.
A good place to start.
Oh, I got tons. All right. I kind of had mine out of order, because I took them, I just write down things down as I think about it, so. You can, I may jump around a little bit. But one of the things that I was told when we first endeavored with this fee study is that we weren't going to include, or did not include, a comparison of other cities with our fees. Did I hear that right or no?
You, you have to, on some of the fees, if you provide, if your, another agency next to you provides a similar types of service, you want to include that just for your comparison purposes?
No, I understand that, but I was told that we weren't actually doing a compare, but we are doing a compare though?
On case-by-case, we will look at some of those, yes.
Because it is principle number two that we identify as compared to other cities. So are there areas, let me, maybe a different way to phrase this question is, is there areas that we are not comparing to other cities?
When we look at the whole fee schedule and we look at some of the, you know, there's a number of things in the fee schedule, some of the things like, if you see, non-pre-removal, those are mostly like costs that we have consultant costs or contract costs that we, we don't look at any other city, we just, that's our cost. Because when we go through those bidding process, we already have those costs sort of, you know, we, we look at those costs at that time.
Yeah, and that's kind of what I'm getting at, because I think some of our costs, we are limited to cost recovery.
Yes.
Right?
Yeah.
And look, so if we're limited to cost recovery, what does it matter what other cities are charging?
Exactly. So we'll, we'll look at the, if we have a, what I say is the contractor model, then we don't look at those costs, because we go through a process to select those contractors. But if there are things that we do, for example, we provide recreation services to a recreation facility, we want to look at what others, if the similar-sized facilities, if they provide that, are they charging something, something similar to us or not?
So those areas, those are the, or so for those items, those are the ones that would not be limited to cost? Is that why we're doing the compare?
They're still limited to cost.
They're still limited to cost, yeah. But what we can do is that when we look at this, the case study, I think that's one of the things we can look at is the fees that we'll be comparing and the fees we won't be. So that way, you get a clear picture of, of some of that.
Okay, I don't want to belabor it too much, but what is the value of comparing to others if we are limited to cost? If others charge a million, but our cost is 100, does it make any difference to us that others are charging a million?
It's a policy decision that some, what happens is like, agencies, like probably not for us, but I would say recently, we did one in Sacramento and for Parks and Rec District. And then this next Parks and Rec District had the similar programs, like they were both offering golf. So the agencies like, should we be looking at? So case-by-case basis, they'll look at that, but.
But I mean, you're kind of repeating the same thing, but I don't think you're really addressing my point.
Yeah.
If, if we are limited to cost, it does not make sense to me to compare. So you tell me why that makes sense.
So, so let me try a couple of things. One is, while we may be limited by Prop 26 to cost recovery, many jurisdictions with some of their fees do not do 100% cost recovery. It's rare that cities.
So we can charge less.
Yeah.
So other cities may charge less, in which case, we want to know what our costs are and what our comparable surrounding jurisdictions are, so that the council can make a policy decision about whether or not to do full cost recovery or whether or not to do full cost recovery. So that's.
That's the contrary.
That's one piece. The other piece that sort of flows into this is, to the extent that the way we are doing something, maybe we learn that it is much more expensive than a neighboring city to do something. It may be because our business process is inefficient. And so what we learn by looking at another agency, if we know what percentage cost recovery they're doing, is that we learn something about whether or not this is an area that we should be evaluating for our own fees. And so that, just the simple fact that we are limited to cost, to not making a profit on our fees, doesn't dilute the benefit of understanding, in a number of cases, what our surrounding communities are doing because of this question of percentage of total cost recovery, as well as maybe opportunities for, for us to look at business process improvements. Now, we're not going to have, nobody else has an Endeavor Hall. It's exactly like our Endeavor Hall. You know, we can generally look at what other hall rentals are, but that's not going to be the most fruitful. But understanding whether, I can't believe I'm going to say this out loud, driveway permits are charged at 100% cost recovery or not in other jurisdictions, that may be valuable to us.
Okay. No, I get that now.
For that conversation.
Yeah. On the flip side, yeah, the flip side makes a lot more sense. Okay, so then, the timing of the overall work, when's it supposed to be completed?
So the goal is that it's going to be included as part of our next budget.
What, what, what is that going to be completed?
Our goal right now is that May is when we are.
May.
Yes. And what our goal is also is, once we have the first step, is that it's going to need a lot of conversation with city staff and understanding some of the fees and developing the model. And in the first phase of the project, we'll, we'll, we'll work with the city on key deliverables and the, and the timeline as well, too.
So that has not yet been established?
That has not been established.
When will that be established?
After this, this was the first thing, we just signed the contract, and this is the first item to bring to you, saying that this is the work that we're going to be working on. And once after this, we can, that's the next step is.
Could we look at that? Can that come back to the committee when that is established? Timeline, deliverables, milestones?
We can attach it to the city manager's weekly update.
Okay, I think that would be good, just so that we can see that. And then, when we talk about things that are going to be looked at, it looks like, I didn't do a one-to-one compare, but it does look like the entirety of the fee schedule was included. Was, was there anything that was not included?
It's, it's look, it's, you have to look at the entire fee schedule.
Well, no, that's fine. I, I, I just, just a quick, quick answer, like if it.
It's not development-related. It's not land use fees. It's only the fees that are service delivery fees.
Okay, got it.
Yeah, that's what I should say.
Okay. Let's see. Do we understand, or do we have a detail of fee revenue collected over some look-back period, two to five years, for each of the items that are here?
I don't think we track revenues by a fee schedule.
Well, we track fee revenue, but we don't track which of the fees we are being charged.
Exactly. We, it's probably lumping into one of the accounts, like different, like community development fees will be going to community development, park fees or police fees will be going to a general fund account group for fees, so we haven't, no.
I, I would make a suggestion that when we collect fees and we are recording it, we tag it to the fee that it is being charged to, so that you can run a report on what fees you're being collected.
That would be fabulous, especially with an online permit system.
Yes, it would be. You know, as part of the journal to record the entry or whatever, some kind of flag so that you could see, it would, I mean, I see that there's a place for a number, but we use number six for everything for some reason. But if you had an indicator of what fee it is and then you carry that forward, you could do a trend of all your fees. Because my guess is, some of these fees that we have established don't get used.
That, that's very well could be.
Just a guess.
Yeah.
But it would be nice to see, like, does it make sense to spend more than one minute on something that we've never actually charged? So I would just make a suggestion that we do that on a go-forward basis, not a look-back basis, because that would be painful.
Can I just add something to that? What about adding fees that are not on the schedule already? So will we have an opportunity to do that after you bring it back? Or do you want some of those ideas beforehand?
There would be something, we'll be working with staff, but definitely if the audit committee, finance committee has some ideas of fees that are not listed in here, and that would be, and you can always bring those ideas to us. You know, you may be seeing something that, that we don't know about, absolutely.
Okay, thanks.
Okay. Let's see, some of my questions are more finance-related, but they're outside the scope of the fee discussion, so I'll, I'll try to hold those, because I know that I'm not supposed to do that. Can we, so one thing that I, I committed to bring up were fees related to the use of Endeavor. We've had many conversations about this, you and I. And the timeline that you established was targeting the May timeline, but there are, the, the use of Endeavor, I think one of the more popular users, not popular, sorry, the more frequent and regular users is the Clayton Theater Company. And they, I think this year, their fee structure is different than it had been in prior years due to council action and just timing of things. What would be, do we have potential to do an adjustment out of cycle for the, for nonprofit users of Endeavor Hall in order to support the arts as council direction?
100%.
Yeah.
You're always allowed to charge less.
Okay.
You cannot charge more than your costs.
As we bring this back, so are we going to bring this back to full council at some point for recommendation?
This particular step in the process is not intended to go to full council. Obviously, once we have more substantive material, we'll come to the committee and then to the council as a whole. The next budget not at committee meeting is February 27th, I think, and so that would be the next time it would come to the committee, not the council as a whole. In order to change the fees, it would require, it would require action by the complete council, not just by the committee.
Is that a two-step or one-step process? It's a one stepper?
The fees?
On the council?
Yeah. The, it's a one step.
So we're coming back Feb. 27 and then our council meeting is March 7?
That would be the next council meeting after the 20. That would be the next council meeting after the 27th of February.
Okay.
Period.
Then not for this meeting, then I would suggest that before our next meeting, I can come back with a with a proposal or suggestion that we could discuss at our next meeting. And then that would be sufficient time to come back at the March 7 meeting for council. So to do that. And then one other item that is actually fee related is we have this fee waiver that's been longstanding since 2009-ish, if I recall, for this, that the CBCA enjoys.
Yes, that's about the timeframe, and it is by virtue of a council approved agreement between the city and CBCA. So it isn't driven by what the costs are or the fees are in the fee structure. It simply says the city will either apply these fees or not apply the schedule of fees to particular events, specifically for events by CBCA.
Okay, we can talk about that at our next committee meeting on Feb 2 as well. I'd like to, I'd like to address that at that time.
Okay, that is less, that has, that's not a question of fee schedules that I would recommend be a full council discussion because it's really a discussion about the the broader policy question about the city's relationship with CBCA.
Okay, so you think that's outside the scope of this and may maybe more full council discussion?
Yes, that would be my recommendation.
That's fine then. I could work on the scheduling on when we could slot that in.
Okay.
For sequence. I think. Oh, yeah, okay. So when we talk about the full load for cost recovery, do we include indirect cost as well?
Yes, we we include salaries and benefits, and then we include indirect costs for a particular department. And then we use, also include indirect costs for administration, like, you know, finance and other departments that provide services as well.
Salary and benefits for indirect, for for that, too?
Yes.
Do we include like the present value of the unfunded pension expense as well?
No, because that that has already been created by, that was already, the unfunded portion, are you looking, the unfunded?
Well, every every time you're, if you're allocating a portion of cost and that cost is time, attached to that time is some portion of pension expense.
Normal cost is, current pension, yes. Normal cost is included, that the employee is every day there here, there's a normal cost for pension that's included. But the unfunded accrued liability for people who left the system, that's not included.
Okay. And the rate at which we calculate that, like, is it a, what, how do we calculate it?
The pension cost is the rate is given by CalPERS.
And that's the present value rate?
That's based on the the actuarial rate that they give us every year, CalPERS, or you know, they give us the the current normal cost, what they say, is the for the employees are.
Okay.
And it varies by different bargaining groups. So I mean, I would say retirement benefits, like if somebody is a, what they say is a classic employee, has been in the system for a long period of time, they may have a different rate. And then somebody who's a pepper employee, they may have a different rate.
So we treat it the same way we would with full cost allocation or full cost development for a position. So the position is salary, it's benefits, and it's all of the ancillary costs. So every time a pepper employee comes on, it costs the city an additional 7% that the city pay approximately, that the city pays to PERS. That 7% normal cost percentage of the salary would get folded into the indirect cost model for the fees.
I I get that. That makes sense. I'm just not sure if I agree that 7% is the right number, but it is a number that they give us, so, you know.
And it will be hard to like do the present value because then you, it's like, how do you just, you know, you have to.
I mean, you're, I mean, the 7% is already present value?
Yeah.
Sort of, sort of. I don't, I don't really believe PERS is tables, but.
The PERS is two years behind in their reporting valuation. That creates a little bit of challenge so that they keep adjusting each year, so.
And and so that benefit load, that also includes, that also includes like accrued PTO and every, like that, the full load?
Full load. It's the full cost recovery. It's basically what does, it's not compensated absences.
Oh, no?
No, no. It's not the vacation or sick leave, because that is the benefit that you're providing as an agency. But it's based on the full years of salary. So you know, that that's already accounted for. Like if person is paid $50,000 for the year, it's $50,000 plus pension cost, plus healthcare cost, plus any deferred cost that city incurs or any other education cost, it's all folded in. So it's fully of cost.
But not compensated absences?
No.
Why would that be?
Because we don't budget on an hourly basis for compensated absences because we don't know, we don't know when people are going to leave, and so we don't, we tend not to budget for compensated absences. We account for compensated absences, but we don't budget for them. And so this cost recovery is based on essentially budgeted costs. It is not based on the accounting of the potential down the road that we would have to potentially pay that out.
Could we consider that as part of our cost recovery? It's allowable, right?
I have to go back and take a look at with our team to see, but.
Because there's definitely a number, where you can calculate the number. We know what it is. We know what people earn. You could project it out on an annual, and then if you add it into the rate, it's just another, it's like an opposite of a haircut, right? So.
It's one of those areas that I would say that, I mean, just from experience, we tried to do some unfunded costs like that or mandate and from previous cities and city attorneys basically took a position that we, it'll be very difficult to kind of go through the process of validating those costs with the, so it's one of the things we can look at, but I'm pretty sure that this, if we want to go through that process, it's going to change the scope and it's going to be, you know, because it's going to involve like somebody to look at, maybe with our city attorney, we look at that to see if that's something we can do.
Yeah, I mean, I think the math is actually quite easy. It's the, is it allowable is the harder question. The math is just, it's just arithmetic.
It's not an issue. It's like, it's it's similar to like when you develop utility rates, you know, you, there's so many costs, some of these costs where it's not included in your utility rates. So, you know, so, yeah, it's it's allowed. And I, as far as I know, I have, I don't think I have come across any agency that has included compensated expenses. It's usually based on budgeted costs that these council adopts a budget and it's it's cost recovery on that budget.
Yeah, I mean, the budget assumes that everyone takes what they earn, so you don't have to budget the expense because it's included in your thing. So but we know that's not the case. So, you know, actuals is a better representation rather than budget.
And remember, it's pay our cost that's calculated, so.
It is our cost.
Yeah, but it is, it's pay our cost that's calculated, and then if the employee is working here at that time, then you're assuming that's when the employee is charging. So, yeah, that.
I mean, it's legit cost. It's legit cost to the city, and to the extent that the staff or whomever is working or spending that time to satisfy that particular service, it is time not spent doing other things. When they do take vacation, we have a buyout program here, so if they don't take it, we pay it. So it's really, it is cash to us. So I would say it would be something to to consider. I don't think it's, it may not or may not be material to the fee, but I think it would be, it would be good to know what it is and what we're not, what we're, what we're offering. So I have a whole host of questions that are not fee related, so I will probably aggregate those and send them to you separately outside the scope of this meeting. You. Yes. Okay, I do not have any further questions at this time. I would open the item up for public comment if anyone would like to make public comment. Now is your time. I understand materiality, very familiar with it.
Mayor, one, I do not have any hands raised on this item.
Okay, but you said do not, right? Okay, then I will close public comment on this item. And I don't think you need a motion at this point. So so I will close item 3A and move on to adjournment. Thank you very much, and we are done. It is 5:40.